I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Langer, would you call the roll please? Mrs. Elder. President. Mr. House.
Here.
Mrs. Cozak. Here. Dr. Lachlan. Here. Mrs. May. Here. Dr. Lachlan.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Langer. It's my duty to inform you that we have an executive session at seven o'clock this evening to discuss any personnel. This part of the meeting is hearing of visitors, part one, and anyone in the audience is invited to the podium to address the board on any item that is on to my agenda that we might be taking a vote on. So if you're interested in addressing the board on anything on tonight's agenda, please try to state your name and address. Thank you. I will move for the adoption of the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held maybe date 2012 and the regular meeting held April 17, 2012. All those who have been in favor of approving the minutes of those meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Thank you, those who approved the amendment. Solicitor, do you report, Mr. Maybelle?
No, no further.
Thank you very much. Legislative report, Dr. Lachlan.
Very good.
Thank you, Dr. Lachlan. Education and planning, we got your student report with Mitchell and Carmel.
Hi. As you know, this is our last meeting, so this is our final, and I'll let Kevin say something about himself a little bit, but we have Kevin and Blair Barnhart, Blair's six, she's in here tonight, and they're going to be in the school board at the end of the week. And I'd just like to talk on some sporting events and a lot of other stuff. The softball team lost, you know, Shaler, so we're done. And the volleyball team played at the same time, in the same place, we did, and they lost again, so they're done. And track, several students had the opportunity to go to Stays this week, and some of them included relays, and Hannah Green, Tyler Ross, weren't there either, so we wish them the best of luck.
What I wanted to talk about was economic exchange states, the second time it's been done at Greater Little Rock Senior High School. I had a privilege last year of taking part in it. It's, the topic that they've chosen for the past few years has been Marcellus Shale drilling, which in my opinion is a great topic, especially since it's so relevant for our area. It's run by Mrs. Lieber, who teaches economics at the high school, and Mrs. Wright, who teaches the capstone class at the high school. And what they do is they partner with Dairy High School with their business, and it was a little different this year. I did not have the privilege of taking part in it, because I took it last year, but I talked to students who did, and I talked to Mrs. Lieber and Mrs. Wright about it, and they said this year was a lot more involved. They had 25 different speakers, touch on all the different issues, such as the environmental issues, how it impacted the community, jobs are brought in. And then what they really tried to do is they wanted to get the students to really learn all the facts and then to get their own opinion on Marcellus Shale drilling, so they can make an educated opinion where they're not just getting it from one side or the other, so this way, they know both sides of the story. Some other things that happened was the Meet You bus, which is, it's a bus that, it talks about the history of like the extraction of fossil fuels in the state of Pennsylvania, stuff from the very first oil drilling in Pennsylvania. And then another cool thing I thought that they did was, with the speakers, they all split up into groups with the Dairy students as well, and they were given a scenario, and they were supposed to speak with these speakers about how they were supposed to deal with situations such as, say there was drilling or something like that, and it may have come in contact with the nature reserve or something like that. They would talk to a township supervisor or something like that and see how they figured out. And I really thought, I really think that this is a great program, a great thing that they do here at this high school. I think it's really applicable in the real world, and I think it's a great thing that they do, and I think it's, that we should continue doing it. And now I'm going to bring it back to Carm here to talk about future plans.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you all for listening to my voice and Mitchell's voice. It really stimulated the past couple of years. It feels like yesterday that I stood up here and, I'm not that bad, I introduced myself to you guys. And I just wanted to thank you, because I never thought I'd learn so much. I really took a lot away from this, and I'm so happy and so thankful that I got to know each of you, really, and because it's truly been a pleasure to be with you guys and speak in front of you all, because right now, to me, you're more than just a board, you're kind of your friends, really. And I just want to thank you for putting out with me for two years, and I will keep you all of mine in the future, so thank you. And if you're seven, could you say some things about yourself? And then Mitchell, come on.
As Carmella mentioned, my name's Kevin Bolley. I'm a member of the class of 2013, and I'll be sitting with you guys wherever they are for the upcoming school year. The upcoming school year will be my sixth year as a member of student council. I'm also the current class of 2013 president. I'm a member of National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, and Spanish Club president. I play on the varsity men's soccer team, and I'm a member of the varsity track and field team. And I think I speak for both Blair and myself when we say that we're both very excited to be sitting in the upcoming school year with all of you, so thank you for having us.
I just want to take this time to just thank you guys all for listening to us speak. I really felt as if I learned a lot. I don't know if you guys remember from the first school meeting, but I honestly felt as if I was so nervous. I was just going on, and I was just trying not to stutter. I honestly feel like I've learned a lot, and I feel like my public speaking has drastically improved, and I definitely owe thanks to you guys for that. You guys have been a great help to me, and I've certainly learned a lot, and I've always been interested in learning about local governments, and I've wanted to get into something like the school board or local government positions, so I really feel like this has been a great opportunity for me, and I want to thank you guys all, it's really tremendous experience.
Come back. We have something for you to tell you of our appreciation, because you guys have done a wonderful job, both of you, and we want to wish you both lots of good luck in the future. Kevin, the issues have failed, because you've done a marvelous job, but I think you really appreciated it, because you just tell us the day-to-day running of the schools, you gave us some snippets of life that we usually don't hear about, and we appreciated that very much. Good luck with everything you do, take care.
Thank you.
I will move for adoption, resolution number 227, and that is the adoption of the elementary math program tied with Q and A. It's been moved in second if we adopt resolution number 227. All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
I'm taking out where I left off, I take all the books home and I look at them. So I took these ones home and looked at them, and I also had some expert advice, some retired teachers also looked at them, and the things that they liked, they thought was wonderful book, frankly, and they thought problem solving and projects were real life and interesting, there was enough space for work and to understand. The only concern that was brought up, and I even see the concerns, just from carrying the book around, the integrity of the book doesn't move, just for me turning pages and flipping through the cover, it's bent, it's folded bad, it doesn't look like it's going to last, so that was a concern. I don't know if that was a problem we should look at or ask them about, I don't know how long these books are supposed to last.
They actually replenish those books on a yearly basis.
Oh, okay.
And so they're consumable.
So they're consumable.
They're consumable, and so the purchase actually extends over five years. So every year we will get a...
So every kid's got a book. It's that durable.
Right.
So it is a durable, because it looks consumed. I was, I was a little concerned about that, because I'm thinking, oh, enough, I gotta bring this book back, and somebody's looking like, so my god, it's marvelous.
And you got that book after the teeth.
Okay.
We had a group of teachers that took those books and dissected them.
That was my initial concern about the book. The other thing they asked, and I'm not smart enough to answer, the standards practice workbook, there were, one question that the faculty members had, is this, could this be a black line masters workbook, so they say on the cost, or is it cheaper just to have them hand out to the locals?
We actually get replenished every year, so...
So the cost doesn't make a difference whether they copy it from master or...
Yeah, they replenish those kits, and the nice thing is right now with the standards being fluid, we're getting, they're adopting common core standards, and we know that it, you know, with the adoption, they will change, and that what's being assessed and how it's being assessed will change over time, and so these will continuously be updated and upgraded, so there will be any changes that are reflected with those books will also be changed, so that means we're not buying the book tomorrow, and then next week it changes.
Well, I got a big thumbs up from everybody.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, now, all those in favor of adopting the elementary math program say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. I will also move for adoption, resolution number 228, to award the 2012 summer educational grants as listed under Schedule K. Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 228, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously. I move for adoption, resolution number 229, to approve the Penn Islands accelerated college dual enrollment program for 2012-2013 school year. Second. Any discussion on resolution number 221? It's been moved on, all those in favor...
I have one thing I'd like to say. There was a long article in the Washington Post, a study that the education department of the newspaper has been doing, and the gist of the article was that they found that bigger and advanced courses are making scores better at all the high schools, that that participating is better, and this is part of that kind of ideal for our school as well.
Any other comment? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 229, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. And I move for adoption, resolution number 230, approval of tuition rates for the 2011-2012 school year. It's been moved in second if we adopt resolution number 230, any comments or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously. I will move for the adoption of resolution number 231, approval of tuition students for the 2012-2013 school year. Second. It's been moved in second if we adopt resolution number 231, any discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously also. Just a note, under the tuition rates, they are a decrease for the 2010-2011 school year. It surprised me.
I can explain that.
Go ahead.
The reason, it's based on your instructional costs, and our instructional costs from the '09-'10 to the '10-'11 school year went down slightly, but in addition to that, our ADMs also went up, so that is what resulted in the decrease, and I'm sorry, the decrease in tuition, and the main reason that our operating costs went down, if you recall, we received stimulus money over a two-year period, we spent the majority of that stimulus money in the '09-'10 school year, and then just the balance of the '10-'11 wasn't, you know, was a lesser amount, so that's why our operating costs went up.
I don't really remember that happening before.
It has, and actually, the most recent year was the '07-'08 school year, but I remember that.
It hasn't gone down. That's quite sizable.
And just that heads up, you'll see, you should see the value of it next year. You made significant cuts last year, and this year, obviously, our operating costs are going to decline compared to what they were the previous two, three years, so you might see it again, but I did announce over the last 10 or 15 years, and it's every so many years it has declined, you're right, not by this level, but it has fluctuated over time.
Interesting, thank you. Finance, Mrs. Elder, thank you.
I would like to put together resolution number 232, pressure report 233, annual bills, and 234, device transfer, and for adoption of all of those.
Move in second?
Second.
It's been moved in second if we adopt those three resolutions, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting those three resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously.
I'd like to move for adoption, resolution number 235, to accept grants, and there are four grants listed, the Latrobe Foundation, $10,000, from the Capstone Fund directed towards street restoration project on nine mile run, the Road Recove, Latrobe, $2500 grant directed to the street restoration project, and the Healy Rogers Foundation, $2,400 grant for four students to participate in the Crowe Art Center's workshop, and finally, Wells Fargo Foundation Educational Matching Gift Program, $100,000.
Second. It's been moved in second if we adopt resolution number 235, any discussion, questions?
Mike, just add, the $1,000 is just a matching gift for the monthly old Latrobe Music Program.
We are quite fortunate to have this kind of donations to our district, certainly, and I'll say. All those in favor of approving resolution 235, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
And I'd like to move for adoption, resolution number 236, which is the general fund proposed final operating budget, in the $49,9910.
Second. It's been moved in second if we adopt resolution number 236, the general fund proposed final operating budget, any discussion?
I adjusted the budget based on the conversation we had at the previous meeting. We have a finance committee meeting scheduled for the first week of June, so we'll continue to have further discussion on the budget, continue to monitor the state and the federal allocations that we have, as well as, you know, taking consideration to any adjustments to insurance rates, whether it be medical, dental, vision, life, workman's comp, property liability, those are still, workman's comp, property liability are still coming in, so we'll have, continue to monitor.
And traditionally, you've always adopted the line that we adopt a number, that's a maximum number, and we never go above that in our discussions in the thirty days to follow. I've been told by some people that that is not necessarily the case, but it certainly is the case in Latrobe.
That's right.
So this will be our maximum number, and we look for nothing but lessening the number between now and the end of June.
And the budgets will be available, one copy will, it has been posted to the district's website, our copy will be available in the office as well.
Yeah, when's our health care, when's our health insurance come up a real, I can't remember that.
The medical, we participate in a consortium, and we said we're self-funded, so each of the districts participate, and the consortium have representative on that committee, on the representatives for very late of school district. With the help of HGH, which is a third-party administrator, we move new claims annually and set our rates annually, based on those claims. We had meeting last week, last Thursday, the rate was set at 7.2 percent. 7.2 percent increase.
Any other discussion on the motion? Could I ask for a roll call, please, Mrs. Cozak?
Mrs. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. House.
Yes.
Mrs. Cozak?
Yes.
Dr. Lachlan?
Yes.
Dr. Lachlan?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayes? Yes. That's how it's unanimously.
Thank you. I would like to finalize resolutions number 237, 238. 237 is to tax collectors' appointment, 238 is the designation of repositories, 239 is to reappoint the schools to the French Mark, and 240 is to authorize investment funds. Can I just put all of those together and prove the area?
Second. It's been moved in second if we adopt resolutions number 237, 238, 239, and 240. Any discussion on the motion? No, none, all those in favor of adopting those four resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously.
The last item is a moving idea for us, but a law has been passed that requires us to do it, so this is to authorize payment of school's real property taxes in installments, and I'm not going to read the whole thing aloud, but I would urge the taxpayers to take note of this and to get the wording of this resolution, and I think that all of our tax collectors ought to also have a copy of this and be able to show it to pass to people who come in to pay their taxes, so we could do that.
Yes, I think we will do that.
Okay. So I'll move for adoption, a resolution number 241, which is payment of school real property taxes in installments.
Thank you, it's been moved in second if we adopt resolution number 241, any discussion, questions, comments?
Just one thing I might add, the tax collectors, we have a copy of this, but also the meeting that we had with the county, we're going to draft a letter that each district is going to, it's going to be included each in the mail, and to explain what actually we find is...
So now we go with the actual bill?
The actual bill, exactly.
That's wonderful.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 241, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously.
And as Dan has already stated, our next finance committee meeting will be at 10:00 a.m., the first Wednesday of the month, which is the 6th of June.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Property and finance, Mrs. Cozak?
Thank you. I move for adoption, resolution number 242, permission to advertise, this is in reference to the auditorium room system in Denver.
My next question?
Okay.
Thank you, Elder. It's been moved in second if we adopt resolution number 242, any discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution 242, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously. Do you have anything else?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In your next meeting, our next meeting is June 7, I have a free third.
Thank you very much. Student activities and recreation, Dr. Lachlan?
I'm going to turn it over to Mark to give another reading, Mark, to shine some light.
I have an interesting kid here to share about our softball team, and Carm shared the results of the game. To me, they're not losers, you know, they lost the game, but I got an email, it was kind of intriguing, I didn't know, it caught me, because I'm not aware of a situation that's occurring, you read something, and I'm like, wait, represent my parent, you're trying to understand it all, it was very touching, once I got my hands around this and what our team and coaches did. I got an email that from a family related to me from Shaler, who we lost to in the quarterfinals, and it's kind of right of passing, we play Shaler every year, whoever seems to win is a double job title, last year we won, you know, and it's good, so the teams have a great relationship competitive, and that way, and I was unaware that the coach from Shaler's wife was dying of cancer, living at her last days when we played there. I didn't know that, I was at the games, but I had no idea the course of that. And this email said, I just want to say, it was great seeing you, obviously, this was one of our softball parents. In the game of sports, there are winners and losers, yesterday there were nothing but winners from the Latrobe team. The pitcher, you should, you stood out there beyond words, I was never so proud to tell the parents from Shaler that I know all of you and your families, you were a class act when the light was shining, and you, I'm so proud of you. The unbelievable kind gesture you showed at our coach for his wife's illness is the talk of Shaler. You girls are a beautiful group, and whoever put the time and effort should be commended. From your coaching staff to the players, I can only say thank you to all of you. It was very emotional in our hugout before the game. Well, I didn't know that, I guess, because I was up in this hillside, that our girls at top farm all wore red and white bows in their hair for Shaler, for that coach who gave them heart, I guess, before the game, signed all our players, which shows you the real things in life, you know, the real, what really matters, you know, it wasn't about the game, or win or loss, and then the sad part was, I got an email back in from Shaler, you know, hi, Mark, Skip's wife, because I asked more about the cancer, and what did we do, is there something, you know, is there something? Had battle with a long attack of cancer that attacked blood cells. Unfortunately, she was so extremely ill when the teams played Thursday, and she passed away Saturday. But we wanted to say thank you to the Latrobe team for the class that they showed that night at the local play-off game. So I just thought, that's what's a lot, I mean, that's what you're teaching kids to do, that's way more than their outcome of a game, I mean, I was very touched, our district would do that, our kids would think to do that, our coaching staff, so Carm, and you guys, that was a pretty touching thing, I didn't even know, you know, this was athletic, but I wanted to share, so many times you hear about kids in the district, and what's going wrong, I thought, well, this is something that's right, this is all right, you know, and these brought up, so I just wanted to share that with all of you.
I think that's wonderful, but I'm not surprised, are you?
No.
I'm not surprised.
You just don't know what's going on.
Exactly. We did have class acts, save for zero. Thank you very much for coming in, and passing along your team, and we really appreciate it.
That's all.
Community relations, Dr. Sort.
Very good.
Under the community unit, we do have to adopt resolution number 243, until field requirements of the Pennsylvania Code, Chapter 14, it's adoption of policies, procedures, and use of funds tied to school districts, so I will move for adoption, resolution number 243.
Second. Thank you, it's been moved in second if we adopt resolution number 243, do I hear any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting 243, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. We're back to Mrs. Cozak for EWC TC joint operating.
Thank you, we actually had the event meeting last evening, normally we meet the Wednesday after this meeting, so I wanted to let you know that the student, this student of the month for EWC TC this month was Dayton, he's a Gregory Woodcock student.
He is a graduate of Latrobe student. Um, he's in collision repair. He, uh, he has a job when he graduates. He's worked in there, he worked there through his co-op. Um, his teacher was very, very proud of his, his work and his maturation, I think, really was what he was trying to get at. And he came in as kind of a, a hoof wall, and turned out to be a really wonderful student. So, it, it almost makes me proud, when it's Latrobe, good being recognized. Um, they do amazing things down here, and I would like, I'm bringing this out in the public, and I haven't said anything to you, Dr. George, Mrs. Swire, but I would like to recognize these students, if it's at all possible, in this meeting. I think there needs to be more of a recognition with these students from E W C T C. And, you know, it's, it's a really nice program they have down there. Their parents come to the meeting, they hear wonderful things about their child. Um, they, they also, they get the graphics for their, to make these parents awesome posters, and, um, so, I, I just, if, if, you know, if we have enough lead time, and they often, occasionally can't make it because they're working, but...
They do all the work.
Right. Right. If we could, if we could do something like that.
Absolutely.
I would like to try something. Yeah. Um, and then the other, the other thing under my committee report is that the E W C T C's senior recognition ceremony is tomorrow evening at seven p.m. in the other chair. And you're all required.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Cozo. We're calling C P S B liaison, Mrs. Elder. Uh, yes. First, I'd like to do the P S B A liaison. In the P S B A website, uh, they noted that they're going to do a few, I think maybe they're thinking of four-year, uh, surveys of, um, P S B A, um, board members. And they're just going to ask them a question about what they think about something. And I think they're also going to try to provide a kind of a forum for widely differing ideas. And, um, I would urge you to take note of that, and if I see them ahead of one of our meetings or something, I'll let you know. Um, first, I'd like to, uh, move for adoption of, uh, of resolution number two four four, which is the final adoption of board policies. These are all of the two hundred section policies that, um, we were asked to look at online, uh, because these are the policies that need to be cited in the student manual, which is printed for our students over the summer months. Uh, I'll do, uh, move for adoption of that. Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number two hundred and forty-four, final adoption of board policies. Any question or discussion on that motion? All those in favor of adopting that resolution, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. And the next resolution, number two forty-five, has to do with, uh, board policy number eight fifteen, which is, uh, having to do with technology resources and acceptable use of the internet. Uh, I'd like to, uh, have us adopt the intent to adopt the revisions in this policy this evening, and then adopt it, uh, or commit it in a whole meeting on June twelfth, so that it too will be ready for inclusion in the student manual. And the reason, go ahead, second, first, you know, come along. Go ahead and second.
I'm better.
Thank you. Uh, the reason that this needs to be revised is the change in our, um, technology. We have now, uh, actually three different, rather than, um, the way we've been doing laptops or personal computers, we've now going to have three. We're going to have school-owned, we're going to have, um, school, bring your own devices from, uh, and a number of across-the-board devices. And then we're going to have another one where the student is buying the, um, sort of leasing the, the machine from the district. So, these are, um, revisions that Mrs. Finisterre made to take those things into account. And the, um, revisions also include changes that have been recommended by the School Courts Association after the recent, um, news about the use of cyber devices to, in, in bullying and, uh, in the unfortunate happenings at Rutgers University. So, uh, I would recommend that we make these changes, and the copy of the proposal with changes is in the board packet, and the changes are all in, um, they didn't get them in red. We have them in red, but, um, they, there are changes that are necessary for, for, for all of the spans. And the technology committee has looked at them, and we have copies of the new board. I thought that everybody was getting the changes in red policies. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number two hundred and forty-five, the intent to adopt a revision to school board policy eight fifteen, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Uh, transportation, Dr. Moffler?
Uh, Mr. Swire, meeting tomorrow at three p.m. at the office. Uh, it, uh, we have a high school conference, I'll move it up, so I had to check that it'll be available in the conference room. I know my office is available. Okay. Three p.m. tomorrow, we should have some good information. Lots of matches to see. That concludes your conference.
Thank you, Dr. Moffler. Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Thank you. Mrs. Swire, please, three p.m., the resolution that I would urge you to pass, resolution, um, two forty-six, as it relates to wireless network upgrade reviewing all six buildings in the district.
Basically, it should say this in my mind, that the Great Old Latrobe Board of School Directors hereby approves computer-centered line technologies as the provider of the wireless network upgrade project at a cost not to exceed three hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. A copy of the FOIA executed agreement will be made part of the official minutes of the district.
Thank you, Mrs. Swire.
Okay. Can you make the motion now?
Do you have a motion? Or I, I would.
I'll second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number two hundred and forty-six. Any discussion on that motion? Yes. I'd like to say that Mrs. Finisterre did a wonderful job of, um, both preparing and receiving, receiving your responses. Uh, she gave us charts, I mean, book charts, they're wonderful. And, and, and had everything at her fingertips of any question we could ask, and she really had all the questions answered before we could ask them. And, um, I really feel that this is not the absolute cheapest way we could go, but I think that it's the right way for us to go, because our district has already been using technology to a much greater degree than many of the districts around us. And when you do an apples-to-apples comparison, as she did for us in, in this, um, in the work that she did, uh, it's, she has truly justified this expenditure for us, as far as I'm concerned, and I compliment her for doing that. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution number two hundred and forty-six, the wireless network project upgrade provider, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And, uh, next, uh, conference meeting, June fifth, at four p.m. at the district.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Superintendent, certain patients, Mrs. Swire?
I ask the board to move on resolution number two forty-seven, which are the resignations listed.
I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number two hundred and forty-seven. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two forty-eight, which is the hiring of the support personnel appointments that are at the top of the list.
So, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number two hundred and forty-eight, the support personnel appointments. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number two forty-eight, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two forty-nine, which is the approval of the senior high school counseling intern for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year, and resolution number two fifty, which is the approval of the on-road driver education instructors for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year.
So, move. Go ahead and second.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Palmer. Thank you. All those in, um, any discussion on those two motions? All those in favor of adopting resolution number two forty-nine and two fifty, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two fifty-one, which is to reappoint the board secretary. Uh, Mrs. Lacer, is our board secretary, and we're asking to reappoint her. Uh, she has informed me that this is done every four years, and, uh, we are due for, uh, the reappointment, so I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two fifty-one.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number two fifty-one. Any discussion?
No, sir, you're all checked.
But it always gets a new face this time. Basically, good. She was a little gay.
So much.
Any other comments or discussion on the motion? Oh, yeah.
I'm glad.
Thank you. I'd ask to make that motion.
I would.
Yeah. Sarah, thank you.
Do you slip it? We need to read it.
Okay.
That's because our microphone broke on, I'll stick that way.
Thanks. I appreciate it. All right. Which one is it? Mr. Howard? She's on her robe.
Oh.
Say yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Cozo?
Yes.
Dr. Lockman?
Yes.
Dr. Moffler?
Oh, yes.
This is you.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mayes?
Yes.
Congratulations. We're happy to have you as a paying choice.
And last, we have, um, it's a busy time of the year for all of us, um, closing out the school year, uh, but you'll note at the top of the page, some events that are coming up. One that has been added that was not on in the past is the third one, the Senior High School Spring Wood Show, actually here in the C S C, uh, next week. Um, the students from the tech department will be displaying some of the items that they created and made during the school year, so if you have some time, the opening is, um, Tuesday evening. Um, in addition, um, graduation, which is not on here, uh, is June first, um, here at the, uh, high school auditorium. Um, all board members are obviously invited, and if you haven't had a chance yet, let Connie know if you're attending, please do so. It's an exciting time, and we're looking forward to that event.
Uh, one thing, uh, the way their lettering is done, it looks like the Anna's Memorial Spring Reception is at the auditorium. I think that that auditorium is the one before. Sorry, Dr. Moffler. It's okay. Um, I already spring reception, is that, is that your, that your memory? Okay. We, we have, hearing the visitors, uh, two years, no other business on the agenda, but there's something I'd like to say. Um, I was, I debated standing earlier, and I didn't, but I think it's wrong not to say it. I have been here for a long time and seen a lot of board representatives come and go from the, uh, student body, and there are some that stand out in my mind, and, uh, I have to say that I believe that Carmelina is going to be certainly among that group. Uh, I will not, I, I realize that Carmelina had a bit of an inside track as far as information about this board and what it might be doing, but I always felt that you were a real advocate for this board, not only with the students, which is what your job was, but certainly also with the public. And I remember you being here in our, um, discussion about the budget last year. I remember that very well, and I thank you for what you did, and I compliment you on your leadership, um, not only of those who are your peers, but also of adults who, who may not get it as easily and as quickly and as completely as you do. And thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other business? I would do during the visit. Okay. Hearing of visitors, part two, is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any, any issue at all, doesn't have to be on the agenda. Anyone wish to address the board this evening? Saying none, do I hear a motion to adjourn? So, move. Seconded, it's been moved and seconded. We adjourn on, basically, aye. Aye. Thank you very much.